They're not coming, so sure they're on their way.
Yeah. All right, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council this May sixth, two thousand and twenty five. It is four thirty P M. And we're in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. Members in attendance right now are Councilmember Wood, Councilmember Redstone, Councilmember Harmon, Councilmember Christensen, myself. We're also joined at the table with our city manager, Mr. Healy, and our city reporter, Ms. Kamic. And we are joined with Councilman Hune. We'll excuse Councilman Norfeld for a moment. We have our minutes from April twenty second, two thousand and twenty five to the council for discussion or motion. To approve.
Second.
You have a motion as second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you'll stand approved. We will. You're not skipping anything. Hey, we'll now go to our review of our agenda for this evening. We have city council, redevelopment agency, housing authority, and municipal building authority meetings. Are there any updates? On any of these?
Um, yeah, I believe Jamie has an update for one of the items.
On our regular meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, we have one small change to the agreement for the softball concrete with C N R coatings. As as requested by Councilman Harmon, uh, we added the liquidated damages to that contract if it's not completed by June thirtieth. That's the only change to that agreement.
Any questions for Ms. Young?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, no other updates. We'll go to our awards ceremonies and proclamations, and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Johnson for recognition.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, this is kind of a fun one. Um, about six months ago, I, or no, just a few months ago, I talked to to our city manager, Efo, and we talked about how there is a website where people can upload their runs and it shows what streets and where people have run in different cities. And we have two residents of West Valley City that have run every single street in West Valley City. That is not a gated off private road. There are over two thousand roads, streets in West Valley City, four hundred and twenty seven miles worth of roads, and these two guys have run every one of those, every one of those miles and every one of those streets, and they are proud residents. And, uh, when I reached out to them, they were a little embarrassed, like, well, we don't need to be recognized. And I said, I understand that, but I'm also demanding that you be recognized. So they are, uh, they are excited and they will be here next week. Um, showing their love of our city and showing their love of having goals and accomplishing those goals. So I will bring a map that shows West Valley City and it shows in purple every street that they have run. And like I said, it's over two thousand streets and they run very fast. They run anywhere between five and ten miles every day almost. And so they were able to pound this out, uh, pretty quickly. So um, they're excited to be recognized.
Well, how did you find?
Yeah.
This accomplishment?
Um, um, I got involved in it, uh, years ago.
You're a runner?
I'm not a runner. I am a fast walker, well, depending on the day, fast or slow. Um, and I also did it, did some of the streets with our city attorney, Eric Bunderson, but I wanted to do my home city and I wanted to do my adopted city, West Valley City. And so I do that, uh, when I, at nights and early mornings and other things and and West Valley City, when I was doing it, he actually reached out to me and said, hey, I noticed what you're doing. Um, I'm gonna catch you. And I let him know you're definitely gonna catch me the way you go. And he did and passed me and they finished, uh, I think they finished just a couple of months ago. So, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Sam is mayor times. How far along are you?
Uh, for West Valley City, I'm at ninety five percent.
Wow.
West Valley City, yeah. I feel every one of those steps, so. But I love it. It's it's really a fun way, and I and I think that's what's exciting about what they're doing, that they had finished is they know the city on a street level and, you know, you get images and memories of each street that you walk and I realize there's a lot of dogs that sometimes are running loose. So thanks for our animal control. But, uh, it's a beautiful city and so many amazing things to see and they're they're proud of that, of what they've done, so.
Cool.
Are we getting them a new pair of shoes?
Um, I don't have the budget, uh, so I tell them just to no, but we'll give a, we do have a, a business has stepped up in our community, thanks to John Springmire reaching out to Petzel with a little light that they'll get, a little nightlight, and then they're gonna get a little, uh, plaque that honors them as well, that they can put in their offices.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then, um, our next proclamation is for Armed Forces Day. Is there anyone that would like to read that one on May thirteenth? Okay. Mr. Redstone will take care of that one for us. All right, let's review our public hearing for next week. We'll turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick. This will be the second time hearing this project.
Thank you, Mayor Steve Pastrick, Community Development Department. So, um, as you mentioned, we discussed this one a few weeks ago, and I do have an update. So just a a quick refresher. So again, application from Concord Homes, the property here at thirty two oh one South Redwood Road. And so the the proposal here involves these four parcels. The, um, the proposal would be to change the zoning on most of the property to the R M zone for a townhome development and then retaining the C two zone on the the Beto site. So that was the the original proposal. Here's just a close up of that. Um, this just shows the existing zoning. So again, the red, so we have the green outline is the property in question. The red is the C two zoning that that's currently there as well as the residential or R one zoning on the east side. Uh, this was an earlier version of the concept and then the one that the council saw a few weeks ago. A a couple of the issues that were discussed by the council, um, one was a concern about um, having both commercial and residential on the frontage and potentially just having all commercial frontage. Uh, also concerns about how the parking would, um, be shared with the Beto side and the townhomes. And so, um, in working with, uh, the the applicant, we put together, and this is, sorry, this is back of the napkin, so this was staff. Um, if if the commer, if their frontage were all commercial, this roughly, that's the red area. Uh, if they did, instead of having the road punched through, but had a cul-de-sac, this kind of shows the the result. Um, and in talking with the the applicant as well as the the seller, they they're amenable to something like this. And again, this is very conceptual. And so, um, what what this would also enable is the parking could now be just at the end of the cul-de-sac instead of like sharing with Beto. So it could be internal to the to the development. Um, I I can get into more of the the details we discussed before, but I think um, one thing would be helpful for for us as staff is to know if if something like this is um, addresses the council's concern, we could prepare a development agreement for next week for the council's consideration. Um, because right now there's currently not a development agreement in the packet.
And this isn't a big enough change that it takes it back to planning commission, correct?
Correct. Um, because in this case, there it would just be, um, it would just reduce the area of the zone change.
Okay. Okay, any questions for Mr. Pastrick? The applicants okay with something like this?
So I, I, so the applicant was out of town till yesterday, but I spoke with him today and and, uh, in concept, uh, he was supportive of this. So, um, what if, again, if the council, uh, directs, he he can work on an updated concept plan that looks, it, you know, that's more to this level, uh, but it's more along the lines of this, uh, between now and next week, and we can prepare a development agreement for the council's consideration for next week.
Yeah, I like it a lot better. And they would only use lose five units, just that last?
So this, under this one, so the the original proposal was thirty one, I believe this one was twenty eight, so it's three. Uh, again, this is, uh, this is very rough. They'll need to, um, have their designer take a closer look at this, but it was more just to see if something like this was possible.
And the only thing you're really losing is the tot lot? Or will they still have the tot lot somewhere?
I'll I'll explore that. I think there's probably a way to to still find a place to put that on this, uh, the site plan. So it's really, um, so you're no longer having the road extension. Uh, you do lose a few, uh, units in the process. But then, uh, the the parking, I think, can be reconfigured to fit within the site.
Okay, doesn't look like there's any more questions. Okay. I kind of got the impression to move forward with the development agreement.
Yes, okay, thank you.
I can count.
Yeah.
Or if they're not just going to sleep. All right, we'll move to resolution twenty five dash seventy one. New garbage cans. Turn the time to Mr. Johnson. He's, he's quite breaking.
Good afternoon, Dan Johnson, Public Works Director. Um, this is a resolution authorizing the Public Works Department to purchase garbage cans. Um, we own about thirty seven thousand garbage cans and, um, we regularly purchase them, as you, most of you know, um, we, uh, buy them in one, generally in one truckload increments, because that's about what we can store in our yard. That I need to be crowded. And so we do this about three times a year. And, uh, this is the last time in this current fiscal year that we will be asking you to buy garbage cans. And, um, so we're, a truckload is six hundred and twenty four cans, sixty one bucks a piece. We're a little over forty two thousand dollars for this load of cans. And we we go through thirty-ish garbage cans a week, uh, either with new customers or replacing broken cans and and, uh, generally that's what we do. So we own and maintain the whole fleet of garbage cans.
That's interesting. So how do you control neighbors that end up with more than one?
We, uh, try to keep a good eye on that. We have a, we know, we have, each of the garbage cans are numbered and we inventory them and, um, uh, the best, to the best of our ability, we'll, we'll try to find problem areas. Our our utility building group is really good at, um, kind of parsing through the data to figure out um, where things are at. And of course, cans can disappear, but we, they're.
So you ever had to confiscate?
Yes, yes, we have.
I don't have to.
Well, we'll check.
Well, sometimes you just order pay extra.
Order. We have, yes, we, we absolutely, no, we absolutely, yes, that's a service that we.
That's what we do. We have two cans, and I did still, anybody, my neighbor next to me has two cans. Because we want to be able to fit all the lawn and all the stuff out.
Yep. Okay, any questions on the garbage can purchase?
Nope.
Right, this next, uh, resolution is an amendment to our contract with with Ace Disposal. Um, most of you, again, will recall that for the past few years, Ace Disposal has come to us, um, requesting an additional, an increase in their fee. Um, and this, they're they're requesting an additional two and a half percent this year. So let me walk you backwards. In fact, maybe I'll go to the next slide for just a second to give you some background on the the timeline of our current contract. So it's a six-year contract that began in two thousand and eighteen. And and then at the back end of that contract, there are two extension years, optional extension years. And so we are in the middle of the first extension year and the second extension year begins in July. And, um, and so within the current contract, uh, there is an automatic two and a half percent fee increase that's built into the contract every single year. And so for the first three or so years, we didn't even have this conversation with Ace. Um, but around two thousand and twenty with COVID and and other things, um, they they saw substantial, uh, increases in their costs. Um, and we saw annual inflation rates of over eight percent year over year. And so they came to the city and requested that we give them an additional, give them a fee increase, and we did that, um, uh, three times. So in fiscal year twenty two, twenty two, twenty three, twenty three, twenty four, and now, um, and then twenty four, twenty five, and now they're requesting a fourth modification to this agreement to, uh, which would essentially, um, you know, if you take the the C P I with where it was roughly in two thousand and twenty to to now, it catches them up basically with with what, uh, inflation has done. Um, they've, they've come to us telling us that that their costs for their labor costs have increased twenty five percent since two thousand and twenty and that the garbage truck costs are twenty eight percent. And, uh, um, and then if you you take the C P I from two thousand and twenty to till now, it it's roughly twenty one percent. Um, so this last two and a half percent essentially catches them up with where the C P I is. And, um, uh, and and I guess associated, and so it is my recommendation that we that we execute this amendment um, for a few reasons. Um, really, I mean, we've, you know, we have a good relationship with Ace and I I trust them and and, um, they've, they've been a a good service provider. And and they did not ask for any of these, uh, rate increases within the first three years of the contract. And then, um, so our contract has a couple of components. It has the collection component, which is roughly three and a half million dollars a year. And then the the garbage disposal, the landfill fees. And, um, since the beginning of, since our contract began, they they haven't increased the fee for the land, the disposal. And so, um, there's potentially additional costs there, but they really aren't involving labor and materials as much as the collection contract does. So they've essentially left that alone. So um, the, the, you may recall in, let's see, in January of two thousand and twenty three, uh, the city council executed, you instituted instituted a one dollar fee increase to the residents, and then in January, two thousand and twenty four, an additional dollar to cover the rising costs. And and where we sit right now, we're in good shape with the contract and uh, with the end of this current contract happening in in roughly a year, a little over a year, we're in a pretty good position. Um, we're covering our costs and we have a healthy fund balance that leaves us in a good position, uh, approaching this next, um, sanitation contract, talk about in just a few minutes. So are there questions about this, uh, this fee, uh, this contract amendment? That I can answer for you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, then I'm gonna jump right in. I want to spend just a couple of minutes talking about our next steps with the next contract. Um, so we are beginning right now, kind of developing the the components of of this next R F P. And we'll go out to the market and try to find the best value and service for our residents. And, uh, you know, a little bit later this fall, we'll come back with with the results of that R F P. And, um, we'll begin negotiation with the contractor so that we're ready to go in July of two thousand and twenty six. And I just wanted to spend just a couple of minutes, uh, reviewing the existing service and give the council an opportunity to to just to give us some direction on on the level of service. And so, um, these are the components of the the garbage service. I won't go through them line by line, because you all know the sit, the program well. But I'll give you a moment to kind of think about any of the components of our service, whether it be the dumpster program or the recycling. Um, and and think if, you know, if we're going out to market, are there services that you'd like to change? Um, elements of this that that you think could be done better or differently? And I guess before we go in there, I I really don't recommend great changes. I think the service is is a great service and between the the neighborhood dumpster program and the bulky waste, we give plenty of opportunity for people to get rid of their stuff and, uh, um, the recycle, we we collect the recycling materials every other week. And I really don't think I wouldn't recommend going weekly. You'll end up just paying for more. Um, just for one more collection, you just increase these without really gaining that much advantage over diverting more materials away from the landfill. So, any thoughts there?
That's pretty clean up.
Hmm.
Is there a limit as to how often a neighborhood can request?
A neighborhood can request the dumpsters once a year.
Once a year.
Yeah. Yep. And we have some neighbors, the neighborhoods that use it faithfully and and they they use it quite regularly and others that really don't.
Hey, I don't see any other questions. Thank you.
That, yeah, these are things we don't offer and again, don't recommend getting into that. Um, and then just as we, as we work through the contract, these are some considerations, whether it be the, you know, we'll, we'll have to think about the duration of the contract. Um, how we escalate the contract, if we, even if if we even build an escalation element into it. Um, and so anyways, if there aren't any other questions, I'll go have a seat. Yes.
Sounds like, I mean, on expert, but I think there's probably only two outfits that could service our city.
There's a few.
Waste management and Ace.
Waste Management, Aced Republic, and we've also heard rumblings of a, an outfit called Waste Connections that might be interested, so.
But Waste Management didn't even bid last time, did they?
They did not submit approval last time, yeah. They they were our our contractor for the last, the previous term. But for whatever reason, at the last minute, they did not submit a bid. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we will have the next two items will be presented by Mr. Carroll, and they are resolution twenty five dash seventy three and seventy four, both related to the Maverick Center.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. Um, I got a little scratch in my throat, but, um, this was important enough to be here, so, um. So the first, the first, um, resolution is to get approval to enter into an agreement with the state, uh, regarding the Olympic, uh, funding. So they, in-house bill three of two thousand and twenty five, they, um, appropriated five hundred thousand dollars, uh, to West Valley City to, for two reasons. One, uh, and this is what we had, we had spoken to them about, uh, going into that process, but one was the replacement of the L E D, um, ribbon board over the grand staircase, which has not been, um, working. Uh, and then the other was design and, uh, a feasibility study with regards to what we can do to improve the Maverick Center going into the Olympics. So those were the two, two things. Um, these are matching funds, so it's five hundred thousand from the state and then five hundred thousand that we would need to put to match it going into the, um, the, these two, um, investments initiatives. So when we, we replaced all the L E D in the arena other than the grand staircase L E D, so all of it has been replaced other than that, including the, uh, marquee on I two fifteen. Obviously, you've seen a lot of, it's an exciting time to be in the entertainment, uh, business, uh, industry, uh, record year, last year, internationally, nationally, and in Utah. Um, you see what's going on down downtown with, uh, the Delta Center. They're gonna put, I've I've been here before, five hundred and fifty to six hundred million. We'll see what that final number is, but they have grand ambitions. Um, the building, uh, needs some, 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 uh, some work, uh, particularly, if you think about it, the Olympics will be here in less than nine years. So we're, uh, short of nine, nine years. So this is the original, this is the initial dollars to give us the opportunity to do a study. Uh, and we're looking at matching that, and we're not asking for any money. So that is, uh, there's no, we're not asking. We're asking for approval to spend money, uh, but we're not asking for 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 money. Um, so and we could talk to that as well. So that's the, that's the first, uh, is to sign an agreement. We're gonna spend a half million dollars. Uh, some of it will come out of the R and R fund. Uh, and some of it, uh, it can all come out of the R and R fund, but there's also, um, you know, a a fund that because the Maverick Center has been, uh, very, um, busy and we've improved efficiencies and and programming and got shows and been optimizing revenue, the the Maverick Center is sitting on the funds to be able to invest in this study, whether it comes out of the R and R fund or otherwise. And the reason I bring that up is when we talk about the L E D board, we are gonna use R and R funds. We may elect not to use R and R funds when we invest into the study because it's not really our, um, it's not really for that purpose. So, um, again, this is an agreement with the state for a half million dollars for matching funds for us to, uh, start the study. And, um, the study, we were gonna, we'll do an R F P uh, for some architect design companies, including the team that designed the Maverick Center, uh, back in the, I guess, mid nineties for nineteen ninety seven build, open. Um, uh, but we're also, so then Jake will be here to talk to you about, uh, theoretically, after we have some design, if you elect to approve this, um, we'd spend about seven hundred and fifty grand on, um, on the, uh, design process to tell us what's possible. And then you will be able to make a decision on what you want the Maverick Senator to be. We'll have options. Um, it's not getting any cheaper, uh, so this is probably a good time. There, now importantly, there are some, there are a few levers that we can look at, um, to be able to a, to be able to invest in a renovation, one of those, you see what's going on at the state. They're approving, um, a lot of different tax, um, purposes for entertainment districts. They, um, have a new one from two thousand and twenty five. Uh, so there's some levers for us to be able to, um, drive revenue to be able to invest in the building. Um, the other reason, we also have more state funds, potentially. There are partners in this. There are partners in the, in the Olympics. There are partners in the building. And so these types of appropriations, it's important for us to make sure that we're, um, you know, up on the hill, making sure that they understand how important this is, and we're doing that, uh, right now, and this is the beginning of of that process. And then the other is the fact that the the building is cash flow positive. Um, and so it's, uh, we continue to, um, drive a number of shows. We have lots of, um, different initiatives that we are to continue to optimize and build off the things that we've done, including looking at new parking, um, fees and and ways to collect, more fees. Um, you guys might get some complaints about some of these things, but I doubt it. Um, but some of these things, I mean, you look what's going on in the industry, we need to be right there uh, in line with the industry, and we're evaluating all those things. So more parking, but improved sponsorship, um, which we, which we've been doing as well as the suites. Right now, we've got the programming. The programming is gonna be here for the foreseeable future. Uh, I would say certainly for the next ten years. So there's a baseline there that says that we'll continue to drive, uh, additional, um, gross operating profit over the next ten years that would also be. That would also be, could be used for funding a a renovation of the building. So I think there's really three levers, some of the ones that have been passed already tied to some of these entertainment districts that we could qualify for. You know, certainly the state is going to need to contribute at a high level, whatever we, whatever they're willing to contribute or we're willing to get them to contribute. And then, of course, because of the fact that the building is 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 making money, we have the ability to reinvest that into our future. And so that's that's the first one. So this is the beginning. And I think it's, I think it'll give give us an opportunity to know what we're talking about in to do redo the bathrooms, redo the suites. Do some of the back of house stuff that you wouldn't see, but we you need to operate a facility. So we're talking about putting in new clubs and a lot of and and all kinds of different ways to drive more revenue. So there'll be a lot of them will be revenue generating guest experience. And then some will just be blocking and tackling plumbing and pipes and and those things. But it will, we'll at least be able to prioritize that, bring that to you from an architect design firm and and say, this is this is what we suggest. So that's the first one. We got to get into the agreement with the state for them to pay half for us to be able to replace the LED and to start a study to look at what a renovation might look like.
Any questions on this part?
I have a question.
Sure.
So on the, you want to spend the million dollars?
Yeah.
Would would you, are we replacing the LED sign or just repairing it?
We're replacing it, yeah.
Replacing it? We'll do that before we get a preliminary design and all of that or so would that be replaced before all the other improvements?
Yes, yes. And it's a it's a revenue generator. So right now that it's not working, it's it's important for messaging as people are coming into the 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 building for all kinds of important messages. But also, you know, we've had proposals out to Ford and some other partners and Maverick is part of the Maverick is that they're on there. So it's a revenue generating board. Obviously, we can, we can make money on it. So.
Then you mentioned, you know, nine years till the Olympics.
Yes.
So is there a timeline for that preliminary design and architecture? Do you have an idea of when you'd want that finished to allow for construction and things like that?
As soon as possible. Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's it's much of it can be done because it's revenue generating, right? So when we have improved suites and we have clubs and we have all of these areas that you can redone concession stands. You know, our concession stands are old design. They're really not made to handle some of the volume. So the good news for us is we're getting all this volume and these sold out shows. And some of those we're we're getting because the Delta Center is closed for, or essentially for the summer and they're doing a heavy lift. And then they've added hockey and we've talked about this. And so this gives us an opportunity to really do some shows and some of these show, as you sell out, we don't have the the real infrastructure to monitor, optimize these key periods. And that's really what the entertainment business is about. You know, the building sits dark a lot. So if you're not, and that's just the way the buildings go, you know, even if you're booked three hundred fifty-six days a year, the building is most is still, you know, dark twenty hours, you know, a day. So it's really critical in this business to be able to go and optimize the revenue when you have the customers. And so this, as we talk to the experts in design, they will give us some insight as to how best to leverage that space. For example, there's some space in the Maverick Center as it was initially designed that could be repurposed. There's a lot of space in that in that building could be repurposed. So when I say repurpose, when you have offices in the the arena, you don't have to, you can office anywhere. There's some offices you need to have there, but you don't need to have all those offices. So could that that space be used to drive optimized revenue? So that's really what we look at and and I, you know, my my opinion is so what we can do with that building to drive revenue to be able to capitalize on our our guests. Same thing with with, if you look at merch, right? Now, Utah, I believe, I mean, for some reason, Utah is crazy about merchandise, arena, like event merchandise. And when I mean, I think there are three in the country over at the the amphitheater of all of the Live Nation amphitheaters. This one's number three for merchandise, per cat merchandise. So and we are challenged. We have small, narrow concourses. And then we have space that could easily be used to optimize that revenue. We share in that revenue. So that's in our best interest to create a great experience to be able to optimize that revenue. That's just one example. Same with concessions. All kinds of opportunities for us to rethink that. There's no shortage of what we could do. It's just, there's going to be a the right plan for investing in the building.
You you saying about pop the inside?
Sure.
You're going to do the outside to like maybe facelift, something look like a little bit more modern?
We will, yes, we will. We will. I mean, there's lots of stuff. I mean, for, you know, now, one of the things we look at is when you, you know, when you walk up that arena, which is great, right? It's got this grand, you know, you're you're in the, when it's snowing outside or raining or doing everything, that's where our lines are. We're queued there. So as 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 the guest experiences have improved over the last twenty, twenty-five years in the entertainment business, that's, you know, they've come up with solutions. So those are things that we will be, yes, we would love to do it. We've talked about it. We think that it needs it. The question is, as we prioritize what the right spend is and what what our partners are willing to invest and, you know, and what the need is, is, yes, but certainly.
You have something?
Yeah.
You forgot it?
Yes. Well, I'm just maybe a comment and a question, but I mean, this, I certainly don't want to leave a source of funding on the table. But this is a big chunk of change. And then, you know, the study, the design and architecture could come back and say, well, we need more. And who knows what that cost would be.
Is this a hard cost, the seven hundred, seven fifty?
Well, that's what we're going to challenge. It is our cost because that's the state has given us five hundred thousand and we're willing to match that. So it's going to be like, tell us what you can.
If they want the job, they need to.
They will, yes. Yeah. So we're not going to spend over. So but it it is critical to being able to identify and come up with a plan. And it is going to, so this initial will not cost more. There's a big number probably out there that is coming, that is looming, you know, so. But that doesn't scare me at all. Like I said, there's a lot of levers for us to be able to to be able to utilize and pull and to to be able to put put this, including, again, I mean, if the state, we've got a partner that is very speaks very ambitiously about what they want this Olympics to be. And I think we all agree, we want to be a part of that and we want it to be the best it can be. We want people to come here and think that this is an amazing arena and that they're having an amazing time, an amazing experience here. It's great for West Valley City. It's great for the state. So I think that number, if it scares those guys, then we should be, then we should be in trouble.
This is, the LED ribbon is for the exterior of the building.
Yes.
Right above the stairs.
Sure. I'm going to show you a picture if it's the next, it's the next item. Yes, we're moving right. So what will happen is the next item is we're ready to replace that. So we'll talk to that.
How long have it been not working?
Um, it's been not working probably for a year, six months or something, something to that effect. You can't get the parts anymore. So we have to replace it. It's over fifteen years old.
Does the Delta Center have a ribbon like that?
Yeah. Oh, we're, we're, we're way behind in in LED. Everything that we're, that, there's a you think of it in this terms, right? They built the sphere in in Vegas. The whole thing is LED, two billion dollars. We are definitely, there's, there's, we could spend as much and we could be as much as anybody would wants us to be. So yeah, we're, this is the critical, and it's revenue, again, revenue generating.
How much revenue a year?
On that board? Uh, well, I can tell you, I have two programs that board is critical to them because that I've I pitched. So I've talked to Ford. Ford's one of our partners there. We proposed to them, they've been the the sponsor of the Latino event series. And they don't get any, you know, and and they told us, we don't want any signage. We get enough signage. We just want to do do this. So we had put this program together for them and they've been very happy with it. But one of their dealers, this is the dealer group, said, we don't have any signage. When we did the deal, put the deal together, you don't want any signage. So now they want signage. They, and what we're able to do with this, if you think about it, is so I've pitched them that we can customize that messaging by genre, right? So we have a country show where we have a, a, you know, a Latin show, or a family show, we have a heavy metal show. They're all different customers than what Ford would typically have be pitching to, right? So if you're talking about selling a Ford one fifty or a minivan or whatever, they are going to have the opportunity to be able to customize that. So I would say, if you to answer your question, so I'm not not answering, I'm going to get to your question. But I just want to give you a little example of why it's probably four hundred thousand dollars. The board is going to cost us two hundred and forty thousand. The state's going to pay a hundred and twenty of it. And we'll probably make somewhere between three and four hundred annually based off of putting that into different partnership packages. I could tell you.
You should lead with that next time, you know.
I'll, yes, I will lead with that.
Then a hundred fifty and make four hundred, I mean.
Yeah. Well, I wasn't selling the board here.
Okay.
But it's also, yeah, I'll leave it at that. Any other questions?
Hey, looks like you've answered them all.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Uh, so the next one is going to be the LED ribbon board. And I'll, I'll take your advice. We're going to spend about two hundred and thirty and then that'll be co-opted by the state. And we'll make probably three to four hundred thousand dollars a year on the LED board. And, yeah. So that we that we need a resolution to be able to buy that. We went in and did an RFP. The RFP came back. The best one came back from the people that we use to do the LED marquee on on I two fifteen. So very reputable company, local company, and we're looking forward to getting that done as soon as possible. And I look forward to coming back and telling you how much money we're making on it. So, yes. So that, any questions about that?
Can we confirm before we vote what the source of funding will be, whether it's R and R or general fund or?
Oh, this one is definitely R and R.
Match. Sorry, I'm going back.
Okay, I should have left with that. It's a we can make that determination right. The bunny's there. So I would.
Maverick Center?
Yeah. The reserve funds. And so just to give an idea, the reserve funds, I think, are at the end of the year will be about four million and then we're, by the end of next year, be probably six million. So the last three years, meaning the last two and then, so there's money there. And we continue to want to build on that. I think EFO said that I was going, we were going to do five million. The last time, I think that was public, I said it?
You said it.
Oh, my God. All right. Well, anyway, even if I whoever said it, I think is very possible. So I, as we look at the building, I will definitely be much more detailed as we start get that big number from 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 the study of, okay, here's what, here's what I feel really good about us having over the next fifteen years of this thing generating money. And and here's our plan and here's how we we plan to get to it. So so we would take that out of the, yeah.
That's where.
Any other questions?
Looks like you've covered it all.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right. Would the council like to add any or all of the resolutions to the consent agenda for May thirteenth?
Definitely not.
The first one?
Except for the C and D.
C and D or just C? And the garbage cans and the contract can go to consent? Okay. All right. Well, now to go to the council calendar. Did anybody have any questions?
There is on Friday at Limestone Park, they're opening the mountain bike skills horse and trails. We're involved with that. So I didn't see that on the calendar.
I will confirm with Jamie. Get it on there. We have that information.
Hey, was there anything else? Hey, good catch. Thank you. News business, any potential future agenda items?
Look, I'm talking a lot. Sorry.
That's all right.
A month or so ago, I brought up the Newton Farms Park. Scott mentioned there's a park in his neighborhood. So I think in EFO, we talked briefly about it. I think that's something we ought to look at, how many parks
are needed?
Are needed, yeah. So I think that's something I'd talk about and how to fund them and how to get them done. I drove over there through Newton Farms again this weekend and it's just an eyesore.
Yeah.
I don't know how y'all feel about that.
We're working on that.
Okay.
Council stuff is working on it. Hope we're bringing something, sure.
Okay, perfect. Anything else?
I don't know if it needs to be an agenda item, but I know at one point, sometime in the time that I've been on the council, we've talked about amount of green space, amount of zero escaping, et cetera, et cetera, in several different iterations. And my only problem is more I hear about it, the more I wonder which one we're doing. So is there something we just?
A brief update on what the rules are?
I had a a resident call me and say, I've got this one that's right across from me and he's got no green at all in his front yard. And I've got green in my front yard and how come I get as many, you know, tickets as he does? So I drove down by him and yeah, he's got green growing in his front yard around all the zero escape. The other one's got zero escape, but he's also got these barrels put out watering troughs, actually, that looks like he's going to put green in them too. So, you know, do I trust, you know? What is our regulations?
We do have some schedule as well, right, coming?
Yeah, we have a major, like our major streets, correct?
I'm seeing that we have a discussion about residential. I think we're targeting June.
June, yeah, okay.
Want to be sure that I'm quoting the right thing.
I know, because last presentation I had it backwards, which was sixty, which was forty. So it is hard to keep track.
Yeah.
What it really is. We need a little pocket cheat sheet.
Yeah, we do have an an agenda item coming up in the next week that that will discuss the major streets. And then in June, we'll be, we have a presentation that we'll be doing about residential and commercial.
Great.
Hey, anyone else? Okay, council reports?
I had a couple. I attended the city chat, city manager on April twenty-first. I think there were two of them, but I only went to the first one. Thought it was great to bring the employees together. Sam Johnson provided comedy relief. Sam Johnson provided comedy relief. The Utah Foundation Annual Luncheon on May 1st, which you were there as well. It had been, I did a fire department ride along on May 2nd last Friday. Lots of calls went on. And Spring Fest Saturday and Jack in the Box today.
Just one or two things. Trotches.
Yeah, that was really good.
That was really good.
And then they closed for the weekend, but today was their first day open to the public. So, because we were going to go back.
I did attend the Granite District GTI tour and budget luncheon. I think Granite School District is as frustrated with legislature as cities are. Not just us, all the cities that were there. So maybe Jake will realize or saying something to them.
Maybe.
But it was a good, good tour of the GTI. I got to thinking several years ago, well, not several, it's more about six years ago, my grandson graduated from their pharmacist tech program. He's still working as a pharmacy. He's still licensed as a pharmacy tech. He's now working for the State Department of Health, protecting licenses and pharmacists, with a Masters of Public Health, due to what he started in GTI. So I've got quite the history going on with all of their programs.
Cool. Well, myself and Jonathan Springmeyer went to the Abilities Inclusion Services Gala. And West Valley City was presented with, I don't know what they really called it, but kind of like an essential piece, helping them with their progress in the city. So that award is in the offices. I put it by Angel because I don't know where if they want to put it, so. But that was a really nice honor that night, so. Nothing from that side? Okay. Did we still need a closed session tonight? Nothing? Okay. So we just have one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Hey, all in favor, say aye. Aye. And then we stand adjourned.